List in front of me. Seth Roy.
Here.
Michael Aronson.
Here.
Nina Aaron.
Here.
Bobby Baucher, I don't think he's here. David Chow.
Yeah.
Alberto Fernandez.
Here.
Eric Talbot. Don't know that he's here. But that's our board for now.
Bobby, you're here?
Bobby just joined.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep. So you have six members and then the staff want to... I feel awkward doing staff's introductions, so.
Okay, well, we also have with us right now Jaime Martinez, the Director of Planning. We have Jamie Kane and we have our Board Liaison, Manuel Casada. And we have Esteban Garcia, our Consulting Engineer. And I think Eric Talbot also just joined us.
Great.
So I think we're all here. All right, with that, I think we can get into everything right now. So I think the first item on the agenda is 70 Croton Avenue, which is an adjournment. I believe this is the third adjournment for this particular item. So we should expect to see them next month. Or else I guess we'll have to, that'll be a new submission and petitioning. So moving on from.
Well, no, no, let me just amend that real fast. It wouldn't be a new application, but our rules are that if you don't show up to a meeting three times in a row after that third time in a row, unless you come back that fourth month, that you will have to renotice your neighbors when you are prepared to come back to the board. So it wouldn't be a new petition, it'd be the same number, but it would be renoticing of the neighbors.
My apologies. Thank you. Okay, and I don't think there's anything else we need to discuss on that one. Right now, we should move on to the next item, item B, which is Nine Scarborough. This is a excavation and fill application, which I think we heard from a couple of months ago. And do we have somebody here to speak to this project today?
You know, I'm not sure. Yes, we have Mohammed Islam, yes.
Awesome.
I'm going to promote him to panelists.
Okay.
And we have somebody else, I'm not sure if they're from here, so let me ask. Mohammed, you are, you're live, you can speak now? And do you know if your client is here?
I'm not sure if he's here in this meeting.
I see Jim VT, so I believe that's him, and I'm going to promote him.
That should be him.
Jim VT, I'm assuming that's Jim Van Tassel? And Nancy Van Tassel? You are able to speak if you'd like to as well.
Yes, yes, we are here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Nancy Van Tassel are here.
Great, we can hear you all. I don't know if one of you wants to just kind of give us a brief overview of where you are with your project? And we can have a discussion about it.
Well.
Okay, so I'll start with that. So from previous months ago, Jim Van Tassel wanted to work on his existing pool room, where he wants to demo his pool, fill it with gravel, and then finish it with a concrete slab. We reviewed this with the town engineering consultant and received a positive response back from them regarding the proposed plan. And we are going to put a non-structure-bearing partition wall in the middle of the room as well. So one side will be a... Can you go to A101 for the proposed plan, please? Yeah. That's the existing. But you get to see where, on the right-hand side, we are demoing the entire pool. And we are also raising the floor level of this entire room by six inches and change. And the two main, the three main features of the room is going to be there. They will have a proposed crafting room. The main area is going to be a recreation space. They're adding a full bathroom and a small sink and fridge area, but there won't be any gas lines included in that area. And so from there, it's a very straightforward project for what he wants to do. They just want to get rid of their pool completely. And that's what we're providing for this presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just kind of emphasize, and I just, the item before us today, I think, is the activation and fill permit. That's what we're looking at as a planning board. That's why it rose to this level. Like, before we get any comments from the board, just, I don't know, Esteban, if you have any, you've looked at this. Do you have any comments or or issues? I know you've, I think you've taken a look at these plans.
Yeah, no issues with the elimination of the, I guess, the drainage basin or that they were proposing. There were some questions about how they were going to discharge the extra water, because I think there was a issue of groundwater that came up. But since they're no longer discharging onto the site, there's no adverse impacts to neighbors. I guess in this sense, the water would just naturally come up and then over time dissipate through the holes that they're providing. I think they're three by three over time.
Great. Board members, any questions or thoughts on this application?
Alberto Fernandez is here. I don't have any questions. I think it's a straightforward situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Alberto.
Yeah, it's Bobby Baucher. I'm in agreement with Alberto, pretty straightforward. Nothing that raises any flags or anything. I'm totally fine with it.
And Nina Aaron, I would say the same.
Great.
No issue.
Michael Aronson, me as well.
Okay. You know, we do need to go into a public hearing on this. So I think at this point, we're ready for that. I don't think we have too much to discuss. Is there anybody can make that motion?
Michael Aronson, motion for open the public hearing.
Bobby Baucher second the motion.
Any objections? With no objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent. We can go into public hearing. Is there anybody, Jaime, on the waiting list who's here to speak to this application?
Nope, there are no hands raised. I'm going to check my email and, you know. I am not seeing any emails. So you're good to go.
Very good. All right. So we can close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to do that?
Michael Aronson, motion to close the public hearing.
Nina Aaron, second.
Any objections? With no objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent. Okay, so I think that this is pretty straightforward. We've already gone around, so, you know, I think, just, you know, for the record, Esteban has taken a look at this. This is not, you know, this is a localized, straightforward cut and fill. It's, you know, not expected to have any adverse impact on the neighbors or adjacent properties. It's just beneath this existing pool. So I think that we can move forward with the motion to approve the cut and fill permit.
One item, just, there is a condition that needs to be a part of this, and that's that the applicant needs to supply a clean fill certificate in order to receive their permit.
We're happy to do that. We're happy, no problem. No problem. We're happy to do that.
Okay, so that condition will be put on, that would condition be put on any motion that we put forward here or any approval that comes out of this meeting. Do we have a motion with that condition?
Yeah, Bobby Baucher making a motion to approve with the condition of supplying a clean fill certificate.
Michael Aronson, second the motion.
And a rule call.
Seth Roy.
Aye.
Michael Aronson.
Aye.
Nina Aaron.
Aye.
Bobby Baucher.
Aye.
David Chow.
Aye.
Alberto Fernandez.
Aye.
And Eric Talbot.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. All right, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Okay. All right, so I think we can move on to the next, so we can let these folks a moment to sign off. And the next item, I think it's letter C on our agenda. This is, is it 175 Cedar Lane?
173.
173, sorry. I can't read my own handwriting sometimes. So we have folks here from 173 Cedar Lane. To.
So 173 is not on the agenda. They had some conditions that they were requesting to provide, and unfortunately, they were unable to get those met, so they've been removed from the agenda.
Got it. All right, so it's another adjournment for this one.
Adjourned, not removed, right?
Yeah, adjourned, I apologize.
Okay, so we'll keep plugging through. I think we're up to, I guess this is continuing, 14 Water Street. And there's a couple of things to talk about here. So this was, I think, last meeting, we referred this over to the ZBA. They're here. I know that they're in process, the ZBA, they're here today. I think just to give us an overview, just to kind of, I think this is their first opportunity to present to us the project that they're proposing. So I think if we can invite that team into the meeting, now's a good time for them to kind of give us their overview in terms of where they are with this project right now. Maybe an update of what was presented to the zoning board and kind of.
Yep, so we have Eric Churchill and Joseph Brennan, our applicants. We have Skip Francis for Creighton Manning. And then we have the Ally Tepper.
Yep, and Ron Stravinsky should be along shortly as well. He is our land use attorney.
Okay, we have Galaxy TAB 8, 2018. I don't know who that is, so I'm assuming that's not him. All right, and they left, so.
Okay, all right, go for it, whenever you're ready. Great. Thank you, Seth. Thank you, board. I'm going to give a presentation that we gave to the zoning board. And we'll field questions that you guys have. And if you guys can see my screen. All right. So, you know, we're at 14 Water Street. Again, to introduce myself, I'm Eric Churchill. I'm the CEO and founder of Building Works and very pleased to present this project with my team here and be a part of this dialogue of the future of the Station Plaza North District. You know, this district has great access to the amenities of Main Street, access to nearby parks. It serves as a vital connection between that Main Street and the Austin train station and the waterfront. And it really has a unique opportunity to be part of the vibrancy of Austin and the rebirth of this area. It would be a disservice, though, to call this area connector. It is a place, it is a flourishing community. And we look to be a part of that dialogue with the community and with its future and understanding its past. We're utilizing a small.
Excuse me, Eric, this is Bobby Baucher. It's a lot, I'm sorry to interject, but I'm just going to formally recuse myself from this conversation because I'm involved in a transaction. So I'm just going to turn my screen off and I'll be back when you're done speaking, okay?
Very good. Good to see you, Bobby.
All right, thanks, Eric.
We're utilizing a small vacant piece of property here at 14 Water Street. Our proposal seeks to increase both live and work in Austin. This is taken from the Austin Tomorrow Visioning Documents, and we're focused on a live-work model. We're proposing nine two-bedroom housing units over commercial garage studios to create a community on this piece of property. There, we believe that we are meeting the three stated objectives of the Station Plaza North District to encourage mixed-use development on small properties near the train station. That's exactly what we're doing. It's vacant, so it's not adaptive reuse in any way. We're increasing businesses by promoting, by having this commercial ground floor of flexible office space. And we're also providing residential uses to encourage street life. So our ground floor is founded around the principle of this American garage that has long been a suburban kind of prototype for a platform for entrepreneurs, musicians, and artists to meet and share ideas. A lot of people don't have access to that type of space. We're providing smaller, flexible office spaces, flexible making spaces that allow for that interdisciplinary community to foster innovation and we think can be a real asset to Austin near the train station. There's precedent in the Mid Hudson Valley for projects like this. These are adaptive reuse projects, these are bigger projects, but they are attracting this missing middle urban creative. These have been very successful throughout the Mid Hudson Valley. So our massing study and our proposal starts with that we have a very sloped site. It starts at Zero Street at Water, zero elevation at Water Street, goes up 18 feet towards Secor Road. That creates a grade plane that's at nine feet above Water Street. So above the grade plane, we put in our four floors of residential housing above the grade plane. And below the grade plane, we put in our basement, which is our commercial floor. We set the building off the east face by 10 feet to provide light and air to those apartments. We carve out a middle, south-facing courtyard. This provides further light and air to apartments on either side of this and breaks down the scale of the massing. The massing that you're seeing there is the zoning envelope. This is the allowable zoning envelope. And we then push the residential core up against the north to maximize energy efficiency and improve occupant experience. We push the street wall back eight feet six after the fourth floor. This helps create a perception of a smaller building while still reinforcing the street wall that is part of, you know, some of the performative code that different sections of Austin is looking at going forward. We then have an affordable housing density bonus of one unit. We take a one-for-one ratio of that unit that exceeds the density of the full volume, the full density of the site, and put that same two-bedroom unit on the northeast corner of the project. We put on large balconies with sun exposure. These are family-friendly, these target the missing middle, these provide a nice amenity for people living here and also help shade the building from summer sun. So in terms of how this project fits into the neighborhood, which is an important question to ask, we looked at all the projects that are all the existing uses and buildings that are in this area. These are the buildings that are one-in-two-unit houses right now. There's currently only one single occupancy building here. The substantial area of this is three and four-unit projects. There is five and seven-unit projects, and we're proposing nine units. As far as commercial spaces, there are commercial spaces on our street. There's commercial functions in the neighborhood. There's also a fair amount of industrial space in our area. And we're proposing a ground floor commercial where there is precedent for ground floor commercial on our street and nearby. Mixed use, there are a number of mixed-use projects, including the potential for the DPW site just adjacent to us. So there's precedent already for mixed use. As far as architectural statement goes, we are really looking for authenticity of materials. We're exploring glass block and CLT. As, you know, environmentally performative, the CLT acts as a carbon sink, building out of mass timber. For those of you not familiar with this, this is using thick, built-up members of both beams and columns and floor plates. And this creates both a warm, inviting home as well as an environmental advantage. So where did we come up with this? We looked around the neighborhood and there's a great precedent in this and right within two blocks of our building of looking at existing masonry. And masonry is defined by vertical members that are load-bearing. You know, bricks want to stack on top of bricks to create its architectural form. And the other main typology of our neighborhood are these wonderful residential porches, wooden porches. And these extend on Water Street, particularly on our block. And we wanted to incorporate that community feel, that open and inviting aspect of what a front porch is into our project. And so we built our structure to have that exposed wood members, those exposed porches idea. And then layered on top of that masonry, in this case, rather than it being opaque, we have translucent masonry, which is the glass block. And that creates the reading of both the porch, the wooden porch, the vernacular of our street with the history of the industrial masonry building, and that's the reading of this project. We also even did that on the back of the building, on the east face, to give those people from Secor Road the same view and also our tenants on the back the same experience. This is a view from a bird's eye view, showing the occupiable roof, the terrace, the balconies, and that relationship between masonry and wood frame. A view, quickly to step through the floor plans. Here's the ground floor commercial floor. There's a very small residential lobby. I would say more of a residential access point to the elevator and the stair. And the 11 commercial studio spaces. Like I said, these are one to three-desk spaces that could be used for a variety of different things from people that live in the building upstairs and want additional space to work from home, which we think is a very popular, it will continue even post-COVID, greater flexibility for those tethered to New York City jobs but want some space in their home for a private office, to small businesses and entrepreneurs in Austin walking to our building to develop their business and provide back to Austin business development cycle. Each unit is a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, approximately 950 square feet, like I said, with the terrace on each one. And it steps back a little bit on floor four. Floor five has the outdoor terrace space for residents of the building. We're proposing a community garden up there that helps with the, you know, we have the vacant site now, the floor and fauna and the educational relationship between the natural landscape and where food comes from and production and all those wonderful things about what a garden represents and can teach about sustainability and agriculture. Our site plan, happy to come back to any questions regarding this. It is based entirely on the zoning envelope provided by the SPM district. Here is that zoning envelope with the massing diagram that we're, allowable zoning on the right and the massing diagram on the left. Again, the additional unit is the affordable housing density bonus. And our compliance to zoning. We do have three variants that are currently under review with the zoning board. The number of stories, again, solely for the affordable housing density bonus, the building height, and onsite parking. I'm going to skip here to the parking because I think there's probably some interest about what is possible on a 30-foot lot and explain a little bit about our predicament there, which is that on a 30-foot lot, we cannot fit parking on the site, including the building. And, you know, the drive aisle exists entirely outside of that footprint. So we would like to provide parking onsite. It would be better for everybody. We don't have that ability with the site that we have. You wouldn't be able to turn around, you'd be backing across the street. So we've studied this in a number of different ways that the narrow width, it's just, you can't turn around in that space. If you did create a scenario where you could turn around, as in the blue, you're left with a potential of creating maybe three spots and losing an entire commercial floor. And you'd also be losing the parking on the street there. So you might net one, maybe two spots to lose the entire floor to parking. Let alone, I don't know where, there's no space to put a building on this. I should mention that there's no space to put a core, a building. It's really an impossible layout. So we've looked at the Village Austin Tomorrow Visioning Documents to promote development in strategic areas while retaining a mix of uses, allow for a broad range of the highest density. We think that we're really meeting that with this building. We just, we can't do it on a 30-foot lot with the parking. And furthermore, I think that Austin wants, listening to all those planning documents and reading them all, I think what we want is a dense community with vibrant street life, like what Austin already has going on in the T District pictured on the left. You know, developing a suburban model on the right, where there's a big parking pad in front and the garage, the entire design of this project is about providing one to two parking spots, I don't think meets the intention of the district. And further, this would also be a non-conforming project because it wouldn't provide commercial use on the ground floor. So we, you know, are large proponents of creating this continuity of the street wall, not interrupted by driveways so that pedestrians feel safe and the density described is realized. And, you know, there's a lot of parking available in this area. And there's a lot of surface parking. And as Strategy 4.2.4 points out, making it, you know, all this parking makes it less attractive for people on foot and missing opportunities to provide more productive uses on portions of the parking areas. And we would like to utilize our vacant lot to help realize that density. So very quickly, you know, to address the parking, we're looking at how much parking is required? How much parking do we need? And how much parking is available? So per code, we're required to come up with 20 spaces. 13.5 for the residential, 5.75 for the commercial. Nine, 13.5 for the residential, 5.75 for the commercial. But I think what's important is to, to highlight is how much, you know, the different types of, of parking that really is, is brought about by the program of this. There's some people that are parking overnight, there's some people that are looking for long term. And we've done a study by Creighton Manning to look at the parking utilization in this area. And within a six minute walk highlighted in red, there is a, you know, 50 spaces for overnight parkers, 35 spaces for full day, 22 for long term, 95 for short term. And none of this includes the municipal lots or the train station parking. And so we think that there is a, a number of viable strategies that I, I know are being discussed that, of how to work together to accommodate parking in this neighborhood. And we're very supportive of the, the discussions that are happening. So with that, you know, to, to, you know, 14 Water is a mixed income, mixed use transit oriented building, helping to reduce the parking demand. As the population increases, this project will help flatten the curve between population growth and automobile trips because it's transit oriented, because it's near the train station, creating an economically and environmentally sustainable future for Austin. So with that, thank you guys very much and help, happy to field any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I, I think, I mean, there's a lot going on here. I'm kind of curious to see the reaction of any, any board members. I know we're not necessarily going to be deciding on anything today.
I, I had just one question. Thank you for the presentation. It was very nicely done, by the way. I enjoyed that. But shading, I'm just wondering how much taller this building is than the, than the neighbors next to it and whether there's been any thought to, to any shade effects on, on houses nearby. Do you, yeah, I don't know how much higher it is.
I, I, I don't know the height of the adjacent properties. The, you know, this is the zoning envelope that is prescribed plus, and, and the height prescribed plus the affordable density unit. And we've gone to great length to push the affordable unit. I was just gonna, the affordable, to, to push that to the back where that height is minimized to, to the greatest extent possible. So the back of the building, the top of the back of the building is actually only 40 feet above the grade there. And the maximum height above grade, above the grade plane is 48 feet. So, you know, we're, we're, we're doing everything we can to mitigate that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, this is Michael Aronson. Yeah, I sort of just to echo what Nina had just said, I think it would be really helpful at some point. I know we're not acting on anything tonight, but it would be really helpful to see the building within the context of the adjacent properties, both on Water Street and I guess the rear of the building or is facing Main Street. So, oh, Secor, okay. And, and then I guess, are there only windows, there are no side windows if I'm understanding the, the elevations, there are no side windows on either side, just on the portions facing Water Street and Secor Street?
Correct. That is in anticipation, you know, we, that the development envelope in this neighborhood all stack against each other. There's zero lot line.
Right.
In this neighborhood. So we wouldn't put any windows there so that in the future, everybody still has light and air.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think this is an exciting project and, and I really appreciated the presentation. I, I do sort of, again, just it, the building itself feels a little bit out of context with the surrounding area. So again, it would be helpful, I think, at some point to see, you know, the immediate adjacent properties and, you know, and in a rendering or something that would just provide a little bit more context for, for the site.
Certainly, we, we will take that into consideration and we, we've tried to really be contextual with our approach to the masonry and the porches and the bringing, bringing those elements together. And we realize there's not new construction down here, so we're setting hopefully an architectural precedent here of, of high quality design.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a point that was, was made, I think a moment ago, but that while the back of the building faces Secor, there's still another lot between the back of the building and Secor, right? It doesn't have frontage?
Correct. There is about a 15 foot property that we do not own between ours.
Fifty foot wide or 50 foot depth between?
Fifty foot deep.
Okay.
If I go up to the site plan, you can see that it's, it stretches off the page a little bit here. Secor Road would be over where my cursor is, there is a property in between. It might be even a little deeper than 15 feet there.
And so the, the lot, sorry, and these are, these are just simply clarified questions, but you're, you're going, you're going lot line to lot line on both sides here?
Yes, we are.
I, I would clarify, hi Joe, Brandon, how are you? On the north and south, we are on the rear with the commercial space on the ground floor, we're going to the lot line, but the residential steps back 10 feet off the back.
So.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
No problems. Yeah. So at the, at the ground floor where the commercial is, that extends back to the rear lot line, but we're below grade at that point. So you won't even really, you won't even really see that if maybe like a side elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a good one. Yeah. So basically we have a retaining wall back there with our commercial extending and the residential is, it's 10 feet to the back of the facade and then the balconies are even further back.
If, if I can real quick, I'm going to share to show the other parcel behind it. It's, it's not 15 feet, it's like 26 feet. And then you can share yours again. Here's 14 Water Street. And here's this property and you can see the property line actually has about 26 feet from here to the, not to the curb, but to the property line. So that's 14, this is the vacant line on 14 Water Street. And then it's, you know, it's a little stretch from here is about 26 feet.
Thank you, Hami. That's, that's perfect. Yep.
You can share again now.
Sure.
Another question that I had just with the commercial space down at the, at the basement level, looks like most of that is, is kind of below, is below grade once you get past that kind of that grade plane switch. So there's no windows, that's just, that's just all kind of almost kind of tent about the cellar level spaces.
Yes. And we, we think that it's a, a really good use for creating businesses and creating opportunity for a small flexible space that, you know, ideally would have, you know, you know, I think everybody wants light, but of, of, I'm sitting in a windowless office right now. And, you know, we think it's a, it's a very good opportunity to utilize that space in that way.
Other, other questions or comments, you know, I think we can, we'll, we'll definitely have to come back to this. Well, I mean, I think that, you know, that there are, there are some questions. I think that there's, you know, just procedurally, one of the things that, that we've talked about analysis, just about, you know, having you guys move forward right now with the ZBA process. I just wanted to get the board's feelings on, you know, we, we have an opportunity tonight to, to push that process along a little bit by, by voting to effectively allow the ZBA to, you know, to take lead agency and, and lead the SECR process. Amanda, I don't know if you can clarify that maybe a little bit or particularly that clearer than I did.
Sure. So at the zoning board meeting, I don't know, yes, it was the last zoning board meeting. The, the board voted to declare its intent to be lead agency on this project. And that's mainly because of a density issue inherent in the SPN zone that rule, that is raised because the applicant is seeking to, you know, to take advantage of a density bonus here for providing affordable housing. But the SPN district doesn't state a base, baseline density. So it was determined that they should go to the zoning board first and work out the, the basics of their, of their plan to see if they can go get that extra height and extra floor and then come to you. So anyway, the, the zoning board declared their intent to be lead agency. Typically, there's a 30 day window for any other involved agencies, which you are because you're, you have the authority to make discretionary decisions with respect to this application. There's a 30 day window for any other involved agency to, you know, kind of pipe up and say, we also want to be lead agency. Or you can, you know, make a decision that we're okay with the zoning board being laid in lead agency like Seth alluded to, you can make a motion and, you know, say the zoning board can, can do that. So that, if you do make that motion, the 30 days doesn't need to run and the zoning board can, you know, continue on without having to worry about that, that timeframe. And just for purposes of the SECR analysis, as an involved agency, the, the zoning board would definitely be looking for your input on, in the SECR review here. So you should be considering, you know, any comments you as a board would have about this. I think that would be helpful for them in them performing their SECR responsibilities here.
Thanks, Amanda. Does, I mean, does anybody have any thoughts or opinions on, on that responsibility of the zoning board? I mean, I think, I think given kind of what they're looking for in this case, I do, I do think the zoning board is, my personal opinion is the zoning board is a, is a logical, you know, agency to take the lead here. But I certainly welcome anybody's opinions, you know, to the contrary or in agreement.
I, Alberto, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree as well, Seth.
So I guess just procedurally, I know that we're just kind of opening conversation here today, but I think we should have a, or, or, or we should have a public hearing, I think at this point to see if anybody here is, if there's anybody from the public here to speak at this point. Is that something we need to do based on the votes that we're taking, Amanda, or is that?
No, you don't need to have a public hearing on, you know, if you decide to vote on them being lead agency. And, you know, if you decide to open a public hearing tonight, there's really nothing, there's no decision other than giving them the lead agency tonight that you're going to be deciding on. So you'd absolutely just adjourn that public hearing until a future date because this is, this is an ongoing issue before the zoning board and your board.
Okay. That's helpful. I, yes, I mean, so then, I mean, in that case, I think we're sitting here, you know, we, we do have, you know, this one decision to make. I think we've given a little bit of feedback. I'm sure we'll have some more comments as we move forward. But unless anybody else has any other kind of questions or feedback for the team, is, I think we could make a motion at this point, based on the feedback that I've heard from you guys to allow the zone, the zoning board to take lead agency on this project.
Michael Aronson motion to allow the ZBA to be the lead SECR agency for the project?
Eric Talbot, sorry, Nina.
Go for it, Eric.
Eric Talbot, I second that motion.
Great, roll call?
Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Becker has recused himself. David Chow.
Hi.
Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
So we have six in favor and one recusal.
Okay. I think, you know, I think, I think that, that covers it for today. I, you know, we can, I think we can allow these guys to go back to zoning, you know, to kind of, and, and move, move on that way. And we'll, you know, when, when they're ready to come back, we'll, we'll listen more and assume there'll be some ARB issues with this as well moving forward. So we'll, we'll plenty to discuss. But I think for now, this is, this was helpful, this is great. And we thank you guys for that presentation. It was, it was very thorough and, and, you know, great, great to see. So thank you. Okay.
So. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So with that, I think we can, I don't know, Hami, can you wait, you have a way of buzzing Bobby back in, letting him know that we're done with this item for now?
Ah, I, well, I think he's probably just listening, so yeah.
Listening, come back in. All right. So, all right, good. So I think that we're now up to, we have, we have a couple of other things on here. We have a zoning, I think we're, we're up to the zoning, like the, the zoning change.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, give me a second, I'm just moving some people over.
The screen, because I'm I've got freezing screens around me that I can't read very well, so.
Okay. All right. So there are two items in front of you. There is the local law five, 2021. So Stuart was going to try to make the call and I was wondering if we could give him a couple of more minutes. Maybe we can go over the comprehensive plan letter. Everyone has probably received that at this point. So I am going to, if I can, I'll just read it out loud for everybody to hear it if you haven't read it. Well, I guess the first question, has everybody read it? Has anybody not read it?
I have not read it.
Okay. All right. So then I, I will read it. That way we can make sure that everybody's okay with it. And if you are, then I think, I don't think you have to take a vote. I don't know, Amanda, they don't need to take a vote on this letter, but then just get it signed tomorrow and send it to them.
Is it, it's just being referred to the, to the board of trustees?
Yeah, it's a cop plan referral letter. So it's just like a request on, you know, you know.
I mean, a vote is up, it's up to the chair, how he wants to handle it. A vote isn't technically required.
I, I wouldn't mind taking a vote just so, you know, having on the record of the endorsement of, of everybody on the board, I think would be.
That's fair.
Okay. So just give me, I'm just searching for this email with it. All right. So here it is. To the board of trustees, pursuant to the board of trustees resolution, the planning board has reviewed the proposed text amendments to the village zoning code, chapter 270 of the village code and the draft comprehensive plan. Planning board members reviewed the documents and held a work session on March 25th, 2021 to discuss the text amendments. I just got, I'm getting a message from Stuart right now saying he's not going to be able to make it. Okay. So the, sorry about that, got a little side. The planning board members reviewed the documents and had a work session on March 25th, 2021 to discuss the text amendments and draft plan. This letter outlines the planning board's comments on these documents. Initially, we want to thank the villages consultant, BFG planning, in particular Frank Fish, Simon Cates, Sylvia Del Fava and Jonathan Martin for their assistance in explaining to board members the proposed changes and anticipated impacts. Additionally, we extend our thanks to village planner Jamie Martinez, Jaime Martinez, I'm reading my own name wrong, sorry, for his continued assistance throughout. For his continued assistance throughout this process. Proposed zoning text amendments. Uh, the planning board supports the proposed text amendments to the S75, single family and T two-family zoning districts. The proposed changes reduce the middle and side yard setback from 12 feet to eight feet and the combined side yard setback from 28 feet to 20. Additionally, it is proposed that the use table for the T-zone district be revised to identify two-family attached, detached dwellings as permitted uses in the zone as compared to the current conditional and not permitted uses respectively. As noted by Frank Fish, it was unusual that in a district that allows for two-family residences, construction of such residences, or conversion of such residents from an existing one-family residence required approval either from the planning board, conditional use, for two-family attached or a use variance from zoning board of appeals for a two-family detached residence. Regarding the proposed reductions in side yard setbacks, the planning board agrees with BFJ and village staff that the proposals are warranted in these zoning districts. Planning board members inquired how, how the proposed changes would impact those residences in the two districts which residences were otherwise non-performing. Given the limited lot area for many of the properties in the S75 and T-zone districts, the planning board concludes that the proposed text changes are appropriate. In considering the proposed text amendments, the planning board is aware that it must consider the following factors as delineated in section 270 dash 59A1, A, whether such changes consisted with the aims and principles embodied in the law as to the particular districts covered, and B, which areas, land uses, buildings and establishments in the village will be directly affected by such change, and in what way they will be affected, and C, indirect implications of such change, in its effect on other regulations, and D, whether such proposed amendments, amendment is consistent with the aims of the comprehensive plan of the village and the LWRP. The planning board asked the board trustees to consider as another text amendment, a reduction in the current four-foot setback between property lines and residential districts, particularly the S75 and T-zones and all driveways, um, blacktops to two feet. Village Code section 270 dash 30A3 notes that in residential zoning districts, there is a required four-foot setback from the property line to driveway, blacktop as compared to a two-foot setback in non-residential districts. Planning board members noted that the proposed reduction in the side yard setback in the S75 and T-zone districts, from 12 feet to eight feet would not leave sufficient space to park a car in the revised setback area. The property owner would still need to obtain an area variance from the zoning board. One of the asserted purposes behind the reduction in side yard setbacks is to reduce the number of area variance applications before the zoning board. Reducing the setback between the property line and the driveway blacktop in the S75 and T-zone districts would provide, another means of making many of these properties conforming to zoning regulations. It was noted at the work session that when the zoning board of appeals has received variance requests to allow for parking in the front yard, 270 dash 30A5, the ZBA would frequently couple the variance resolution with a reduction in the side yard setback, to less than four feet to allow for parking. The planning board recommends a change to section 270 dash 30A3 for properties in the S75 and T-zone districts. Uh, for the proposed zoning map changes, among the changes to the zoning code presented to the planning board for consideration are the creation of two overlay districts, known as the downtown and Proton Avenue overlay districts. The planning board at the March 25th work session discussed the proposed overlay districts and their impact on the village. Planning board members reviewed the overlay district maps, regulating plans, and the building forms and standards. As planning board chairperson Roy noted, four base codes allow for compliance which allowing, uh, for improvements to future buildings. Planning board members inquired about the boundaries of the overlay zone, particularly the downtown zone, and whether that zone should be extended to the station plaza area. Both BFJ and village planner explained that the station plaza zoning districts created as part of the 2009, comprehensive plan were still relatively new, so there was no suggestion to extend the downtown overlay zone further west towards the Hudson. There was also insufficient support from the board trustees to so expand the proposed overlay district. Planning board members inquired about the opt-in required for developers to use the overlay and were supportive of this. There was, there also was an understanding that for the additional fifth floor density bonus, a special permit would be required from the board of trustees. Planning board members also were informed that creation of the downtown overlay district should not negatively impact, those properties in the Main Street Historic and Architectural Design District. The planning board is supportive of the creation of the proposed overlay district. Now for comments from the draft comprehensive plan, overall, the planning board's reaction to the draft plan is very positive. At the March 25th, 25 work session to the planning board, uh, reviewed many of the draft plans chapters. Questions were asked about development of the waterfront under the draft plan. The, the creation of a waterfront resiliency area to the west of Metro, the Metro North tracks, was discussed, as Simon Kates from BFJ noted, it is hoped to leverage the area west of the tracks as an economic development asset. In response to a question, how the draft plan differs from the 2009 comprehensive plan, uh, it was explained that the draft plan has a greater focus on climate change. It is noted that reference to the effects of climate change was specifically commended by the Westchester County Planning Board. It further was explained that no need for zoning changes in the waterfront zoning district was proposed due to the relatively young status of those districts. Chairperson Roy noted that as a result of COVID-19, perhaps there should be some consideration to planning, for the riverfront where the terrain is less of a draw. Planning board members also favored making portions of Main Street one-way to allow for more bicycle pedestrian travel. Member Aaron supported the development of a village green with additional community space downtown. There was also discussion of the need to improve existing bus service through the Beeline system, Westchester County, to be supplemented with a local jitney or other similar service. Member Talbot noted the challenge of finding housing that meets current needs of the population. Conclusion, the planning board thanks the board of trustees for supporting members of the planning board the opportunity to review, proposed changes to the zoning code and draft comprehensive plan. The planning board strongly endorses the document and asks the board, the board of trustee, to consider the additional text amendment for the setback from the property line to a driveway blacktop. Please contact planning, uh, planning director Martinez with any questions. Thank you very truly yours, and signed by Seth. I, I feel like I was like a, like a, like a middle school reading this report.
You did, you did a great job, Jaime, it was, it was brilliant. You should have, you should have been at the Oscars last night.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
Hi, Mark. It goes two nights ago, actually. All right, has anybody have any, any, any comments or, or anything they would like to add or say in response to that, that lovely reading?
Oh, thank you for reading it. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jaime.
There any amendments? I mean, Stuart wrote the letter, uh, but if there are any amendments, we can make them, I, I prefer to make them now on the record, so that you can approve something tonight, because I know the board of trustees really would like to get that letter, uh, as soon as possible, the comment period, uh, ended, and so, you know, we're kind of just waiting on this. Actually, I'm not sure if the comment period ended, I don't remember now, but.
I, I, I think we had already gone through this, right? Um, these, these are the changes that, uh, that we, we already discussed and, and we added a couple of things, right, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
This was the outcome of our work session the other night.
Correct.
I, I, you know, I think it's a pretty, a pretty good retelling of it. I, my, my only question, I guess this, this satisfies both our comments on the comp plan in general, as well as the couple of specific zoning amendments, I guess the.
Yes, yeah.
75 and T-zone, which were specific zoning amendment changes, but then there was the overlay, which was, I think, more conceptual, it wasn't, really proposed, I mean, it, it might.
Uh, so there, there, there are some zoning amendments, I think we fall to the S75 and T district, they're pretty limited in scope. Uh, the form-based overlay, uh, for Proton Avenue and for downtown are new, so they're not really amendments as much as they are additions to the code. Um, and then the comprehensive plan is another thing, right? So the comprehensive plan sort of, they are connected issues, and they're being looked at together as a part of SEACRA, but they are, or they are different items. And so this letter covers both the comprehensive plan and the zoning text amendments and additions.
Right.
Okay, um, so I, I guess I would, you know, just, you know, I, I do want to have some sort of a vote on this, maybe we could do a, um, you know, a unanimous consent type vote on this. Do we have a, kind of a motion to, um, just kind of approve the letter as, as written?
Alberto Fernandez, I, uh, make a motion to approve the letter, the letter as, uh, wait.
Bobby Bakker, I second that motion.
Any objections? With no objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent. Um, so we can move forward with that. And, um, and then the last item on our agenda is kind of related, it was this zoning text amendment, um, related to local law five dash 2021, uh, which is really just deals with notifications of, public hearings for, for land use boards, for land use meetings. Jaime, do you want to, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read the, the language that was sent over as in, you know, linked to the agenda. Um, but we should probably take a look at it and just kind of have a quick understanding of, of what it is that we're discussing, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up and share my screen. So this is actually, you know, it's largely with the notification sign, so. I, I'll read the, uh, the addition here, so.
You're, you're all warmed up now, so it's good.
You know, I, I gotta tell you, that last one was hard, and it's reading on my phone, the writing is about this big. So this is a little bigger, it's a little easier. Um, okay, so section 270 dash 60 notification sign, so, uh, section eight. Uh, every applicant that submits, submits an application for proposed land use activity to the village of Austin, board of trustees, planning board, BAR, zoning board, or HPC, uh, must post one or more notification signs on the property, which is the subject of said application no later than 10 calendar days prior, to the public hearing on the application and must maintain the posted sign in place, until the approval authority has rendered its final decision approving or denying said application. The applicant shall post one sign per 300 linear feet of frontage on each street upon which the subject property funds. The sign shall be erected not more than 10 feet from each boundary of the property that abuts a public road and must be conspicuous to the public. The bottom edge of each sign, so erected, shall be positioned no less than 14 inches and no more than 36 inches above the ground. In the event that the subject property abuts more than one road, additional signs will be posted facing each road, on which the property abuts. If the sign visibility is obscured by vegetation, the applicant must cut the vegetation to a degree sufficient to maintain, clear visibility of the signs from the road. If the property does not abut a public road, one or more signs shall be posted in a village-approved location, that can be readily seen by the public. Any signs erected under this provision, must be removed and returned to the village of Austin planning department, uh, within 10 calendar days after the approval authority has rendered its final decision approving or denying said application. The size and location of the sign shall be approved by the director of planning or designated. In the event that the, that an application shall be withdrawn or become inactive, the applicant shall remove the sign within five calendar days of withdrawing the application, or of receiving notice from the approval authority that the application has been designated inactive. For the purposes of this section, any application which has not appeared on the approval authority's agenda for six or more months shall be designated inactive. The approval authority shall notify the applicant in writing that the application has become inactive, and instruct the applicant to remove the sign until such time as the applicant, application shall be reactivated. Once the application is reactivated, the signs shall be posted within three calendar days signage. Uh, the village of Austin planning department will supply the signs and the initial cost will be included in the application fee. However, if the director of planning determines that a sign larger than those provided by the planning department are required, the applicant will be responsible for obtaining signs, at the applicant's expense. The applicant shall be responsible for, for replacing any signs that is, uh, are damaged, destroyed, lost, or stolen during dependency of the application. A replacement fee will be charged for each sign that needs to be replaced. The sign shall indicate the time and place of the public meeting on the application and such other information as deemed necessary by the planning department. The applicant shall maintain the sign and ensure that it remains plainly visible and legible while the application is standing. If the applicant places a sign at the time and in the manner detailed in the section, if the sign does not stand for the entire period required, the approval authority, is satisfied that the sign had stood for a sufficient period of time, and that the applicant had taken all reasonable steps to restore the sign once the applicant had become aware that the sign was not standing, may act upon the application, if the applicant can demonstrate to the approval authority satisfaction that the failure to comply was not the applicant's fault. E, if final action is not taken upon an application on the date shown on the sign, the sign shall be updated to show the next date, time, and place when the application will appear on the agenda, of the approval authority. The sign shall be updated no later than 10 calendar days before the date, of the meeting when the application will next appear on the agenda of the approval authority. F, at least 24 hours prior to the public hearing, public meeting, the applicant shall submit to the planning department an affidavit stating that the applicant has posted the signs, meeting the requirements described in this section along with photographic evidence to verify the placement and maintenance of the signs. Um, and then it'll be effective, you know, as, as soon as it's filed, so. It's basically, you gotta put up a sign in front of your property. Um, which is pretty common in, in other municipalities, so.
There's also Jaime, a change to, um, to 70 dash 49, so that now the ZBA has to notify neighbors 10 days in advance instead of five days. That's right above this.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry. Um, yeah. I skipped right over, yeah.
Um, but yeah, what, so our notice is currently in the papers, and direct in the mail to neighbors, and then the agenda is posted on the website. And the, the language that Jaime just, just read for us, is that now there will, in addition to those notifications, be posted notice on the property as well.
So this will just be like a prefab sign that you guys have there, that you put on, like with the white, dry erase marker type thing, the updated dates or something of that, that, that type?
Yeah, probably not dry erased, yeah.
I suppose not.
It's something like that, yeah. I, I don't think we've worked out like the full detail, but we have the framework of it, so. Um, you, you know, we maybe need to get it printed, we need to get something else, but we'll, we'll figure it out. And I think like, you know, we might, we might just work to get one blank sign that has like, sort of strips written on it, informations and just replace those pieces. If we can use them over and over again, that would be ideal.
Does, does the sign say specifically what action is pending, or just that an action is pending before the, whichever ruling body?
I believe it's just to say that something is like in front of the board.
Okay.
That way they know they can, you know, they can inquire about that information.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think, you know, a lot of people don't always catch the notice, and I think it's helpful for people to understand that something is going on in their community, and if they want to follow up, they can.
Well, from, you know, from the standpoint of, I mean, I, I think that there is this perception that there's a lot of these, in every community, there's always this assumption that people are just approving stuff, and I think I was never informed. And so, you know, you are supposed to get a letter, so if you, if you go and, you know, you see a sign now and you did get a letter, it's just one additional layer of ensuring the community is aware of their rights to respond to any pending applications. I think that's, that's the idea here, and you don't want to create a super onerous process. And so one of the, one of the previous requirements was that they had to send certified mail, which is quite expensive. That, that was, uh, removed at some point in the past, Jamie came and you can, weigh in on that, um, when that was removed?
It was recent, it was, it was, I believe, a year or two ago.
Yeah, so this is sort of, I think, you know, not speaking on behalf of the place where this came from, but I believe that this is sort of like, understanding that there was a step back in the requirements from the, um, from that requirement to send the certified mail. Now there is an addition of the sign, so it's, you know, it's, it's getting the word out, in applications in front of the boards.
But it will say which board everything is, you know, whether it's planning or land use, the historic preservation, or.
Yeah, I would, I would assume for those applications that have multiple boards, that there would be multiple signs, yeah.
Multiple signs.
Um, sorry to cut you off, um, Seth, but this just same, you've dealt with text amendments before. This has been referred to you from the board of trustees, um, yeah, pursuant to the, the code, you have to render, um, a report within 62 days of the referral. Some of the, the, um, items that you're supposed to consider when it comes to a text amendment don't really apply, because, um, they're kind of specific to, uh, zones and land use and such. But, uh, we can talk about the items that the code provides you should examine when it comes to a text amendment, and you can talk about those things or talk about anything else you feel. talk about those things, or talk about anything else you feel is relevant that the, of the Board of Trustees should know.
Yeah, please, could you just give us that, that rundown?
Sure, um, concerning a proposed amendment to or change in the text of this chapter, um, you should consider whether such change is consistent with the aims and principles embodied in the law as to the particular districts concerned. Which areas, land uses, buildings, and establishments in the village will be directly affected by such change, and in what way they will be affected? The indirect implications of such change in its effect on other regulations, and whether such proposed amendment is consistent with the aims of the Comprehensive Plan of the Village and the L W R P. So.
I would kind of say that the, the first two are dealing specifically with, with place and, and that aren't necessarily relevant, the second two, I think this kind of does, I mean, certainly with the, with the comp plan and public involvement and, and making sure that everybody's aware of what's going on, I think that does jive with what's been in, in the comp plan, I think the, that, can you just read that third point again, because I think that was relevant as well, and I think this addressed that.
Yes, uh, it is the, the indirect implications of such change in its effect on other regulations.
Right, I, I, you know, like speaking to the, to the prior change where you got rid of the, the letter, the certified mail to make things easier, but then it, it kind of created the notification issue, I, you know. I don't, I don't see any, you know, kind of adverse impact other than a lot of signs, it's sprouting up all over the village, but, um. I don't know, I don't know, any other questions, or any, anybody else have any feedback on that, on that front, I, I, I feel happy endorsing this.
This is Eric, oh, sorry, I, Nina, I didn't mean to, you go.
Thanks, Eric, um, yeah, I, when I first read this, I was surprised that we didn't already have this in place. Um, because I thought it was pretty standard for most communities, and it makes sense to me that then people can, you know, can, uh, understand if something's going on in their neighborhood, they'll see it um when they're driving past or walking past. Um, and I also like the fact that it's got in here that the sign needs to be taken down, because the last thing we want is, note to your point, Seth, about signs kind of popping up everywhere, we don't then want them lying around after the fact as well, so, yeah. I, I'm in favor of this.
I think these signs are required in every municipality I've ever worked in, I, the only one I don't know is New Ashel, which I didn't want to get involved in planning something here, but Nina, you did, so this is required there as well, right?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, this is Eric Talbot, I, uh, I, I think that the, uh, proposal, uh, the proposed, uh, text uh is, is, uh, positive for the, for the village, and that I've seen this broadly in, uh, other communities in Westchester, and um, I don't know so much outside of New York, but um, and I think the more transparency, the more, uh, the more venues, uh, or excuse me, the, the more, uh, ways that we, that, um, uh, public hearings are communicated, or publications before the boards, land use boards are, are communicated to, to the general public, especially to neighbors is, uh, is going to, uh, improve, uh, communication, improve trust. Um, that's all I'd like to say.
Yeah, I would just echo what Nina and Eric said, I, I'm, I'm bored with this.
Definitely, me too.
Um, so I, I guess we need to get a draft of a, of a letter now, um, based on this, on this conversation, and then, so there's not really any action that we would make right now. We would get a letter like we did tonight for the, the comp plan and those other zoning changes, and then the next time we catch up, we can, uh, just, you know, kind of, maybe Jaime can read, read another letter onto the record. And.
Looking forward to that, I'll have a, I'll have a draft letter for you at the next meeting.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about applying to like Amazon to read books. You know, everybody in my family says that I sound like Marvin the Martian, so it'll be like, as narrated by Marvin the Martian.
The melodic tones of.
Whole other career out there waiting, man, geez, who knew? Um, all right, well, on that, on that triple note, um, I don't think we have any other business in front of us, I, oh, the minutes from, uh, from our last meeting, I know we're distributed, um, could we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Bobby Baucher making a motion to approve last month's March twenty-third minutes.
Michael. Oh, sorry, Alberto.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Michael Aronson seconded the motion.
Any objections? No objections, it's passed by unanimous consent, the minutes are approved. Um, and I guess that's, I think we should have, um, I don't think, since we don't have anything else, I think we can have a motion now to close the meeting.
Michael Aronson motion to close the meeting.
Alberto Fernandez, I second.
Any objections? No objections, the meeting is closed by unanimous consent, and we are good for tonight, thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Have a good night.
Right.
Thank you, you too.